All right, at six o'clock, so I'd like to begin the select board meeting for July 28th, 2025, Westport Island. I'd like to begin with warrants. I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number 116 for $907.30. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And this is, 116 is actually last year's, on last year's budget still. I'd like to move that we accept payroll number six for $2,068.09. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number seven for $114,975.27. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
And that includes the RSU, which was over 88,000, and also it's a 10% deposit for RCS, the auditor, where we, when we signed the contract, we had an commitment to do that.
Lock them in.
Yep, yep. So that was about 16,000. I'd like to move that we accept payroll number eight for $2,068.34. So I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
And lastly, I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number nine for $1,581.83. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, I'd like to move that we accept the minutes from July 14th, 2025, select board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Before we move on to citizens' issues, can we just do a quick check to make sure our computer is good, since this is the first time on our new town laptop? Charlotte, can you hear us okay?
Unmute Charlotte. There you go. Whoops. Anybody else on besides Charlotte?
I have a co-host on here. I think that must be Donna.
Yeah.
I can hear you.
Perfect, good. Is the quality any better than it has been?
Obviously not.
We'll get a, we'll get a review after the meeting.
Okay. Alright.
Did you have another question?
Yes.
What was it?
Oh, I was just asking Charlotte, is this any better sound quality than?
Yes, it is. It is better, so far.
Oh, great. Good. Last here.
Do we get Jim to start talking, right?
Let's see.
Did you, did you show like great soul somewhere? What did you do?
Um, we got a new town laptop, and so we're
Just a laptop?
It's a new laptop.
Well, it shouldn't, the speaker, the microphone should be an owl box, so it's not anything changed.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, but it's been so bad lately. We don't know, couldn't figure out why.
And we were using all these different laptops, so now we're just gonna use one, troubleshoot one.
Okay.
And Mary Ellen Barnes is gonna get us an additional mic for this.
That would probably be
Yeah, yeah, another, yeah.
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 Alright. Okay, moving on, let's go to Rhodes.
I think April's, I assume, has forwarded you the
Yeah, the guardrail, yes, yes. Yep, wanna tell us about the guardrail?
Estimate.
That's replacing what was there, the whole telephone pole table, stuff of the 50s, 60s.
Is this, um, what's it, Westshore Road?
Westshore Road.
Okay, there's also some of that on Bridge Road.
Yeah, there's some of that left on Bridge Road, yeah, yeah.
So, what we're looking at, Charlotte, is the installation of approximately 525 linear feet of galvanized vehicular guardrails, and this is on Westshore Road?
Yeah, right on Thomas is held down by Archie's, but it's
Yep, yep.
And they, matter of fact, one splits his driveway. This one on one side of his driveway, then it comes out of his driveway and keeps filling that road. That's replacing what was there, the footprint of what was there
Okay.
With a modern ribbon type guardrail.
And the estimate is $21,671. So did you reach out to them for this estimate? Is this like?
Westwood actually has an accountant, and they did work on East Shore Room. And I talked to Gary about the work over there by the, uh, by the brick, bridge, model color, brick, red, white color. Uh, years ago, not much call for guard railing. This is the first time I've ever dealt with it.
Yeah. Is this another kind of thing where there's not that many?
There's this, this is the spot, this is the spot.
But I mean, there's not that many businesses that
No.
Do this, right, right, right.
This is actually, like, I've seen him go a lot shop over at Edgcombe. So, they don't, he says, guard fence, he says, we wouldn't go to Westwood though, guard railing we will, because they need, they got a truck that drives in the boats. Uh, I don't wish to offend Rocky. Well, no, it's not brought there because of, that's been all filled.
Everywhere else is better.
I've seen them work. They move pretty well, quick on the highways.
Yeah.
And Jim, this is coming right out of your regular, um?
No, this is coming right out of the road improvement, because we were looking pretty good there. So, this is all part of the Phase 30.
Perfect. Part of the Westshore Road and all that work.
Yeah, the main road, the Westshore Road, and, uh, yeah, we come up pretty good on that. All the bills aren't in yet, but I pretty much know where they're at.
Perfect.
It'll be a carry for them.
Great, great. So you feel like this is a, a
I feel it's
Worthwhile estimate?
I think so. Like Gary said, uh, you know, they treated the town right over there, and we were rating their system. Uh, I wouldn't know who else to go.
Right.
You know, and they're coming. So, even from coming, that's, you know,
Right.
That's the whole.
That's the distance, yeah, yeah. There's already an hour's drive there.
And they do, I see them around doing guard rail work. Like I said, they don't do fences over this way, it's out there. Guard railing is very
They're a little niche.
Well, it's a very specific
Yeah.
Job, you know?
Yep, yep.
And that's not, that's better than what I figured, because
So, it's a lot, 500 something feet, that's a lot.
It is, and then the end, you know, we're all, you know, designed to run into them and, and look through it, you know?
Breakway, not breakway, but they, they screwed out the sides so it, yeah, so you know, they don't impale them and
Right, that's why it turned into Archie's driveway a little bit, which I want to do, because that way you're not
Right.
Hitting one of them right on the end.
Yeah, yeah. Well
I was happy with that. Then that's up to you, then there's other road things that have happened.
Well, I'd like to, um, to make a motion that we accept this bid, and have them move forward with it. So, I'd like to move that we accept the bid for the $21,671 for, um, the guardrail. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm in.
Only on the real update is state has mowed the sides of the road, Brady has mowed the sides of the town roads, and fills the holes up some of the dirt roads that are starting to show themselves.
Funny, he was here Friday when we were here.
Yeah.
And he was getting some gravel and stuff, and somebody said to me, what's he doing and where's he going with that? So I explained, one, who he was, working for you, and that he probably was spilling potholes someplace. But it was nice to see that there was concern that, okay, who's taking stuff out of there?
Right. That's a whole conversation.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, I, in fact, I talked to him for a minute as well. We talked about mowing, and one of these days we might even have plants. Did he ever eat them off?
Frankie's probably like, man, oh, look at these, they're getting awful tall.
Yeah, yeah. I told him we would talk about that once, once we got things planted. We're just moving the deer food around right now.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, he told me, he said, I was just mowing that area back there, and it's like, I know. And there were busters back there, but it's okay. I think the deer yard was first.
Well, there's between the deer and the turkey around here, it's, yeah.
They keep everything. Two little babies very close to here that I just saw the other day.
It's hard to drive down here and not see if we said, it's not one's fault, but, well, I did come down here yesterday and only seen five. But I only rode Westshore Road, and that was something.
I've got one with a antler found way your, which is a person.
Wow.
They're placed, I don't know, I believe I've seen, now, I just always have, usually like, uh, three or four female deers with all the babies.
Yeah, that's what I usually get, yeah.
Like, tons of bucks, and we never had one. They're down here, there were six or eight old then.
Alright, so we're finished with load? Alright, committee reports, any updates?
Property committee, uh, updates trees tomorrow, being taken care of at the History Center building. And I don't make things look a little bit different there, but I think it'll be nice to move forward. So, we've contracted that with, uh, Colin Bergeron to take the trees down, and then we're gonna do an in-house operation where we rent a stump grinder, go and grind the stumps down, which that should be fun, and then we'll do some planting. And I think it'd be really nice, and that, that area will actually be nice and usable. We'll keep it clean and maybe put picnic table out there for people to go enjoy the point, and so that's tomorrow. We've got our next property committee meeting on August 6th.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and at that meeting, we're gonna talk about all the projects that are ready to be started, and there's a whole slew of them. April has set up a property maintenance tasks, you know, signup sheet, which we're gonna finalize a little bit more before we put it out on August 6th, but people will be able to go online and look at all the different tasks that are needed, and they can sign up for ones that they either wanna be solely responsible for, or wanna jump in and help for, or, you know, it'll just be a really good way for people to decide what they wanna do and what they wanna help with, and
What the needs are.
And what the needs are, or like, what, a lot of the stuff is step by step, so they'll be able to see, okay, what are we ready for next? So, I think, um, once we get that up and people get used to it, I think it's gonna be great. Get Jimmy, he's not thrilled, but
Right, you won't, anybody's saying.
You won't have to do it. As you can see around the town office, we've done some of the work, the drainage has been started, we've got, um, stone getting ready to be put down. Donna's already started a little bit of the replanting. So I think that that's all gonna come together pretty quickly now, and then we'll do some painting and screws this place up, get it ready, and I think it's a little further on the agenda, but I think we've got some heat pump work maybe coming soon, so that's a bonus here, and for me on my end of stuff, but that's good, to get that work done before we come in and do, yeah, and, and even to do the rest of the outside work, it'd be nice for those guys to have plenty of space.
Yeah.
Well, we've got the lease almost ready and prepared to present to the History Committee and FOA, and I think we're gonna have a Zoom meeting on Wednesday. Did you know that?
No, I didn't know the Zoom.
Yeah, I got an invite to I don't know, I got a, I got an invite through Zoom. I'd rather do it in person.
Well, no, I did first.
Okay, we can do it.
But we, we also have the Zoom, because we have people that are remote.
Yeah.
At 4:30.
Yeah, can, oh, wait, do you know before it goes out, or before already consigned or not?
What?
The lease.
Oh, the lease.
Yeah, you probably signed it in a meeting.
Yeah, so, do you have something specific about it you wanna make sure is, is or isn't in it?
The septic, it really, now, if you own the building, you should own the septic responsibility, so
But we do, well, that's, that's a bound responsibility.
It shouldn't be. It's whoever's using it. If you start really using a septic system, you should own it. And you should, if you own the building, you should be responsible, on behalf of maintaining it, and making sure it's in good shape.
But we own it, though.
If you can, if you want, it's, it's a
I know.
Oh, it's, it's like the AC units, if you're, if you're, if you wrecked a commercial space, you, if the AC fails, you're in charge of it, not going more.
Yeah, but if the septic fails, the landlord takes care of it.
Commercial space. Uh, defense media on the lease, I mean, I listen, and, and, everything I've been involved with divorce, the, whatever is provided, the water and sewage. Yeah, sometimes trash is very problematic, but it's urban. Yeah, there's, if it's a shared use thing, yes, but this is not a shared use item, so, but it's a sure, it's just, it's a shortage. It's one structure, one structure, one, one, one room. So, if you guys start using it and start, you know, dumping grease down it, it's them, you know, the, the, that's not for me to maintain.
Well, I, and I suspect that if, if all of a sudden we were seeing things abused, that we'd have a conversation about that. Uh, we'll, we'll
I'm not like, oh, it's expensive. I'm calling works half the time anyway.
Yeah, we haven't gotten it quite right yet, anyway.
I understand what you're saying, and I, I'll bring it up. We'll, we'll banter that back and forth, because, you know, it is
But I mean, I don't think the building's gonna get more used than it's already getting, right?
Well, hopefully more visitors, you know?
Yeah, well, yes.
It's size for, you know, single-family house with the two bedrooms, so and you start turning, you've got a small, leach field, small septic, and you're, you're starting to put people through it, it's not, you start opening, expanding it, you can spend your hours, it's not, not size for that, it's size for a couple of people living down that side. But if we can keep track of it, we want.
I think we just put a sign up that the bathroom doesn't work, and
You think it's the privy in the parking lot?
There you go, we had the privy.
Jason, I think some of the reasoning also is that the town is keeping the land that the well and the septic are on for potential
It's still about access to maintenance, okay, well, or the other way around.
Right? Somebody's got to maintain.
Well, it's, alright, definitely something you can have a conversation.
Yeah, we'll banter that around and see what people say.
Anyway, that work is in progress with, uh, Kim and Ashley and, yeah?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
All around with the folks on Wednesday, then it'll go to a lawyer to make sure that it's all legal and everything is kosher, and we didn't miss any, like, huge. Like, hey, why didn't you put this in there, so?
And he may have comments about that, too.
Everything's shit all, but it's moving.
Yeah.
And even though it's a 99-year lease, it's not like you're locked into the terms, like, if you have a period visit, if utilities go up, or if usage changes and all that, so
Item number seven says, yes, amendments, right?
Yeah, things will change, because costs change. I mean, it just, it has to be, right? So, as, as, for example, as
They're going from $1 to $1.5.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
We
But I can't go to $1.5 for at least 50 years.
I think we had talked also with Ashley about possibly having a septic person come in, just kind of whatever they do with septic systems, that they can sort of assess, you know, the system itself, the systems, you know, because
Because if you just, when you buy a house, you definitely come in, you, you get, um, they, they put a camera through the system.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, just because all we do is pump them at this point, but, I mean, who knows, you know? And that's a valid point about the usage, you know?
Like, since there's been no tenant there, living there, and pilots, you know, pilots, look how long it took to find out there. There's a ton, a whole ton, the pump didn't work for a year, and then finally, after a year, the tanks full.
Yeah, they were talking about, and work
Five flushes a week every month.
Yeah.
So, put your restaurant in.
I don't see, I don't wash the clothes there, you don't take a shower there, you don't wash the dishes there. You're just using the bathroom. I see that, you know, a thousand gallons over a year.
It's a thousand, the tank?
That's what was pumped out of the tank, there's a thousand gallon tank, the pump tanks, 300 maybe. Uh, and it was all pump, you know, the pump works, you know, it's a 14-year-old septic system, I do believe, it wasn't Yeah, they want, that type of system wasn't around for very long. I don't think they're the best, but it's functioning.
Okay.
And it gives very minimal use. It's grease that kills it.
Yeah.
It's grease that works, septic, so
No cooking bacon for breakfast.
Well, I think it hasn't been no kitchen dishes washed there since we had a tenant there. It's not that kind of stuff.
I'm sure that Ashley will be monitoring that, and if all of a sudden there are issues or whatever, that, you know, the, the lease can be negotiated, renegotiated. So, anything else on your
That's it, all we got for problems.
I just wanted to give a little update also on committees, and that is that, um, the board has been going to every single, or asking to have meetings with all the different committees. And we either meet with the committee when they normally meet, or meet, ask them to meet. So we met with the planning board already. Wednesday we'll be meeting with the History Committee during their regular time. Uh, last week, or two weeks ago, we met with the Conservation Commission, um, and I'll have a follow-up actually on that in a minute. Um, last week we met with the Cemetery Committee, had good conversation about that. Um, this week, we're having a meeting, other than Wednesday, with the History Committee. On Thursday, we're having a meeting with the Shelfish Committee. And, um, and I think the last couple we have are the Plant, the, um, Appeals Board, and what other committee?
The, like, the
Properties?
The
Property Board, yeah. Well, that sort of is its own entity, but anyway, we're trying to make sure that we see every single committee and get the same spiel sort of, but then also talk about specific, um, needs or requests that we have for their help. Um, so that, I think, has been going well. Do you have any update or comment on that, April?
Well, I don't think so. I was just double-checking the calendar. So it's Shelfish this week, yes, property, and Board of Appeals the following week, Harbor Committee, that's
Harbor Committee, that was one, yeah, yeah.
On the 14th of August. I think that's it, except, uh, History, you're meeting with, because you're going to their meeting.
Right, right. And that'll be this week, so actually we have two of them this week, yeah. Alright, select board business, um, we already considered the guardrail estimate, so that is done. Um, you wanna talk about the auditor contract?
You mean the, the, the rebound?
So, we have an auditor contract down here?
Yeah, the envelope, it's, uh
This auditor.
Uh, yeah.
The real auditors.
That really tiny type, and it's a million
Not the assessor, oh, yes.
The real auditors, yeah.
Uh, so we have a letter from, uh, or a letter, and they have a a contract for us, and it is for it's free, because I can't find it.
No, Ashley just handed me, that to me and said to have it signed, so I didn't, I don't, I haven't even
I'm not sure that we have, that it has a price on it yet, does it, right away? I don't remember one.
It's a number for, yeah, if you want to sign.
I remember her talking about it, and I thought we just had, we had to sign something. This just says all the things that
What about the end there? There's space for you, wait, back up.
Here's, there's a sign place, but no.
There's a sign place.
But nowhere for you to sign.
Management signature?
Yeah, I think that's you guys.
Yeah, but I'm looking for a price.
Oh, I see.
I don't think they've given us a price yet. So, based on past, uh, work that we've done with them, uh, and it looks like it's, if Ashley has looked at it, then, um, I'd like to go ahead and have them proceed with, moving forward with the audit. We actually are already working on the auditor's report. Did you find anything?
No, but I, I believe that, that, that it's still the case that it's tough to find people to do this.
They've done it for the last time.
They've done it for, as long as I've been
Eight years.
Seventy-five.
Yeah, so, so I'd like to move that we go ahead and, and, uh, sign the proposal. It's a contract, actually, it's a contract, although it doesn't have prices in it.
It's not, I called it contract, not Ashley, so when I put it on your agenda, so it could be a, I don't know.
Yeah, I remember getting this.
Well, actually, I was training for, for treasurers, uh, two or three years ago. It was, that was the, El Ten just talking, it was so difficult to find it on there.
Yeah.
We're losing years, you see how bad some, some summer really is, and they're reconstituting it, looks.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's amazing to me, is that the bill continues to, to be above ground. Yeah, so, so keep your fingers crossed.
Yes, yes.
Because it doesn't have a lot of backup.
Yes.
Just a CPA license.
So, do I have a second to accept this contract? And all in favor?
I agree.
I think I have to sign that copy, too. We have to keep one, and then one, oh, with five. And raise the 28th. So, this, I'll put back my envelope for Ashley. Alright, we have other contracts, and that's for the Town Hall, and, um, you wanna tell us about those?
Yeah, so these are the contracts with, um, the contractor for the Town Hall, prepare for the Town Hall ranch and three-way structure. They did a, our EBIT process back in the spring, and selected Jason Putnam out of this passage to be that one. Uh, he's gonna get started, he said, late August, beginning of September. To get it done before the end of the year, so
Squish. If it's not till then, why have we had the site inside the Town Hall in months now?
Because we had it current, so we had to spend it by the end of
Oh, so it's current, funded?
Yeah.
Okay. Here's some
$5,000, five thousand
We're gonna lose.
Yeah. Well, I, well, I, well, I, a couple of, um, you know, supports out there, so we put them outside, because it's still a thing, but
I know, it's gonna work around it. Um, well, they'll be getting used up very soon. So, um, I drafted those contracts ages ago, I've sent them to Jason, he's looked at them in pretty boilerplate language. Prices that were in his bids that you guys already accepted, so just getting them signed, so I can get them over to him, and he can sign them, and he can get started as soon as he can.
There's a hole, apparent, still wrong on roadside, because that's
There is no apparent, but
Well, he, as long as he's aware of it.
He understands that behind the door is a high likelihood.
If there is, I think he's the guy who can fix that, because that kind of way
So that is already discussed in his work for the front. We're also
It's a different story, where that ramp, you know?
We're also gonna engage him in a conversation about the potential of him doing the side while he's there. So, if, if he's amenable to that, and can make the time for that, we're gonna move forward with that as well. Um, and then it can all get buttoned up. So, we kind of dissected the front right corner and the front left corner to see about the front sill, and what we opened up looked really good. But behind the current ramp is an unknown, so
That's just a, it's just a, yeah, whatever.
So
He'd be there, he'd be down, he'd
Yeah.
Do the
Yes. So even though we've approved these before, I'd like to again approve, um, the contracts with Jason Putnam, the one for the Town Hall entryway structure for $22,680. And the, um, front repairs for $24,600. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
I know. This doing the signing, because now we're doing the signing, yes. Oops, wrong place.
How many are there?
Four.
Two copies of two.
Yeah. Alright, something else to sign, if we agree, and that is the, um, appointment, um, of Thomas Perry.
So you were already appointed now, you might recall, as Appeals Board alternate number one.
Right.
We know the vacancy, so he's getting bumped up.
So now it's gonna be the Appeals Board.
Oh, no.
He was not even a Appeals Board alternate for much longer than a week.
I know, I was like, oh, I'm sorry, I gotta
Holy God.
Tom Perry?
Oh, no, Barbara Craig.
Oh, Barbara Craig.
She's busy with other stuff, so she, um, and we had alternates, so, there we go.
Yeah, really, really nice guy. Do you know him?
David.
Yeah.
I know, I think I, I didn't know until this came up, that he was actually, uh, established residence.
Yeah, yeah, they're finally moving here. He's retired, and Kelly's still working a little bit, yeah. So I'd like to move that we um, to the Board of Appeals as a member, rather To the board of appeals as a member rather than an alternate. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Then, next up, we had an application for the board of appeals. So now a possibility for another, a new alternate. This is Emily Hunt and that's her application. If you read the bottom paragraph, you like listed out her interest in qualifications.
Emily has a master's from URI in community planning. And has been an MA real estate agent broker since two thousand and four. She became a full-time resident to Westport in March twenty twenty four and wants to be an active community member using my skills and knowledge from real estate and planning. I'm committed to be fair and logical when it comes to applying regulations in situations brought in front of the appeals board. So, sounds like a very positive person to have. So I'd like to move. I'd like to move that we appoint. Emily Hunt as alternate number one to the board of appeals. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, I threw that in there. That's not on your agenda because it landed on my desk late Thursday. We got an approved amount for the transfer station award and then the town, the passit sent us another amount and Ashley was like, no, no, no. So they sent some kind of amended contract to get back to the correct amount because it was their mistake.
Yeah, I read that and he said that they would charge us the amount that.
It was in our favor, the mistake.
Yeah.
Yes.
Basically, it's in a nutshell.
And they're gonna honor it.
Yep. So, yeah, it was. Several thousand more than what they had told us and what we approved at the town meeting. And then all of a sudden we get this bill and it's like, this, this bill is not job. Thankfully, Ashley is always right on the ball with that. So basically, this addendum is made by and between the town of West Cassett and the town of Westport Island regarding fiscal year. Twenty five, twenty six transfer station agreement. Basically, it says that it has come to our attention that the amount stated, stated in this agreement was based on incorrect calculation. Though the amount stated in the agreement is in fact the correct calculation based on the approved budget. The town of West Cassett agrees to honor the amount quoted of one hundred twenty six thousand four hundred fifteen back in April. For the current contract term. This changes the quarterly payment to thirty one thousand six hundred and three dollars and seventy five cents. So I don't remember what the bill was for, but it was more than whatever was asked. So, you know, I was rather surprised when I saw the amount for the warrant. Because I had been to a couple of those meetings and I knew they wanted to up it like fifty thousand, you were at those meetings too. So I was surprised it went up only, I think, five or six thousand or something, so. We'll be.
Maybe all the. Did, they, they kind of got wise, thought they better make noise with us.
Yep. So it's to our benefit. Which is kind of them.
Did you make a motion? Yeah, I probably should make a motion to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we accept Dennis Simmons' change to. To, to this year's contract, to, to the addendum to the transfer station agreement.
Second.
All in favor? All right, you want to give an update on the heat pumps?
Yes, we, we finally got our grant money from the state that was awarded for the heat pumps. So the gentleman wants to start working on that this week, actually, for this building. He, originally, the, the work was encompassing town hall too, but that at this point is on, is on hold because of everything that's going on with that building. So, yeah, so hopefully, if he gets going, it'll start Friday and then go into next week. So, yeah.
All right, so one of the things that we've decided, it's, it's in our hands anyway. The, the board's in the, the water study and what to do with that information. So we had a meeting last week, two weeks ago with the conservation commission. And that's still sort of, we're still trying to get membership and whatnot. So in the meantime. We had talked that it would be really nice to have summer people be aware of. Of the results of the study because I, I think Carol, I think it was, I don't know, sometime the dead winter, I feel like. But she gave a presentation, but the report wasn't quite done. She gave a very nice presentation. And so, but that wasn't when the summer people were here and since a lot of the summer people have at least. You know, done the water test or whatever else, we felt like there needed to be another opportunity. And we felt like the best person to talk about that is Carol White herself. She wrote the report, she's a hydro. Hydro geologist. So I contacted her and she's more than willing to come. She said August is pretty hectic, but. Early September would be a good time and that's also a time when the summer folks are still here. She's willing to do it free, although I feel like we should give her at least pay for a mileage and her. Her ferry cost to, to get over here. She lives on, she, Chabique. Anyway, so I'd like to pursue finding a date for Carol. And I was wondering if today we could actually look at dates and choose a date. I'm thinking like six o'clock, it seems to be best for folks.
Can you get that going? If she does six o'clock in the same day?
It might need to be earlier. I'm trying to think, do you remember what time that meeting? But, but when she did it at the town, did you go to that when, when she presented at the town, at the town hall? I thought it was evening.
Yeah, it was evening.
Yeah.
So we can always.
And I have later times in summer to this.
Yeah, sure. Well, as late as possible, I would suggest, if she can make it five thirty or whatever else. But I thought if we could look at a date and I can get back to her and, and then we can start to advertise that so that. And again, it would be pretty much the same report that she gave before. Hopefully with a, a new audience, the same people can come, but basically, the report is now final. And, and, you know, I, I think just, I, I read the report recently again and it's like. You know, she was so good about putting into simpler terms because it's very, very scientific. But, you know, like, what does it mean for us as, as residents of this island? And just do an overview. And then after that, the conservation commission had talked about. Doing some educational meetings on topics like, like septic system. Maybe involve people like Gary Richardson, who's done similar with that. But, you know, what, what can we as individuals do? So, so we're talking about doing some education, but the first thing is just to get Carol here to do.
I would ask her.
Yeah, yeah.
Dates in early September. I mean, we're pretty wide open.
Okay.
At this point, there's.
So what I'll do is I'll get back to her to, tomorrow and let her give me a date. We don't have anything on the calendar, right?
Yeah, I've got, the second ferry service does ten forty five.
That's going for, where it could be, who needs to go for Whirlin out.
She's, I'm looking at the Cousins Island one. There's two different ferry services that service should be.
Well, she anything in September, so I'll get in touch with her, let her choose a date. Preferably, probably weekday, like a Thursday or something. So preferably, preferably a Thursday. Jeff?
Is the report available on the town website?
We didn't put it up there yet. We wanted to have like another showing, another conversation about it before it went up. And then, yes, it will go up there.
Well, I think it's.
Yeah, I think we were holding off because it wasn't finalized, but. Go up on the, the website now.
So why don't, if she's gonna talk in early September, on my August fifteenth newsletter, I'll send it out. I'll explain she's gonna give a presentation. Do you want to read it ahead of time? Give us the results. And I'll post it on the website. Cause I think the concern was, we didn't want to just throw it on the website without having any education to accompany it.
Exactly.
So this way, you can see it, but then they'll be able to go and ask their question.
Yep.
Yeah, at the top, yeah.
Yeah, we intentionally didn't do anything with it because we, we, we wanted to. We needed some mechanism or something.
It's just, it's been a long time.
Yeah, 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 yeah. All right, so I'll, I'll get back to Carol and set a date. And I'll try for a Thursday. All right, that's all I have on my list. Any announcements or anything else? Good, from anybody? Nope. Then I'd like to move that we adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Thank you.